Butten hobbin, everybody.
What?
We are excited to have you on a topsy turvy addition to the podcast.
Whoa, topsy turvy?
Bridgette, what a hell of a week for us.
Dude, seriously.
Let's open this line, shouldn't we?
Well, Nick opens that. We were supposed to be doing three-
We invited all of you.
Yeah, I'm sure we've talked about it. It's taken over our life because it was a lot of planning. Um, we were supposed to be doing three pop-up restaurants. And if you are from anywhere outside of small podunk Lake Geneva, apparently, you know that this is not unusual. People do pop-ups all over the country, all over the world, I'm sure. The city of Lake Geneva cannot seem to understand the concept of a pop-up. Um, after already being approved by the city, um, we had a business license. We had everything we needed.
We had the bartender license.
Bartender license. Uh, we had approval. We've already hosted two pop-ups, uh, not dinners, but two other pop-up stores. Uh, we were turned down at Monday night city council meeting, um, simply, I can't even tell you what we were turned on for because they voted for something that wasn't on the agenda.
So, interestingly enough-
I can't even speak.
Of the top five aldermanic lawsuits against governments in the state of Wisconsin, because just because you're an elected official, especially in state government where certain laws apply, it doesn't mean you can just do whatever the hell you want. You can't just go and break laws.
Um, but here we are.
So I think it's three of the top five are against the city of Lake Geneva because we keep electing these same idiots that just disregard the laws. So our pop-up was turned down because of something not on the agenda.
I'm sorry, it was continued.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
So one of my things is, we like Parks and Rec. That used to be Bridgette's life.
For those of you that don't know, I did use to work for the city essentially for three years.
And Ron Swanson has a great quote of, "Don't half-ass anything, son. Whole-ass one thing. Don't half-ass two things." I'm very anti-half-assing. If you want to vote against me and say, "Actually, Nick, I think you're wrong." You know what? I respect that.
Yeah.
I, I think that's cool. If you want to say like, "Bridgette, you're on crack." At least have the chutzpah to say, "Bridgette, you're on crack." Don't say, "Yeah, I think Bridgette, you're on crack, but I'm not going to vote until next month." It happens that the vote that you're going to do for this is after the events.
Yeah, some shysty things happened is what we're saying. So I know because I worked for the city and did many events for the city. I wasn't, I should clarify, I was an independent contractor to an organization that was part of the city. So-
A quasi-governmental organization.
Quasi-governmental organization. So I worked in city local politics. Um, I did, I don't know how many events, countless number of events for the city. So I know how to pull permits for events. However, I was, um, dragged through the mud personally, saying that I didn't know what I was doing and that I signed the permits incorrectly and-
And friends, let me tell you, Bridgette knows what she's doing.
Girl, okay, you guys, I just, I'm going to brag on myself for a minute because we were not in a good spot about this, Nick and I. We were pissed to say, like, that is a large reason I quit my job with the city is this is unbelievable how-
Cheers.
Cheers to what I'm about to tell you. So it's unbelievable how stuff like this happens when I planned events in Milwaukee that, you know, with hundreds of thousands of people that happened like this, where you can't plan something here for a hundred people without like eight years of planning and 27 permits and four different elections. Anyway, so, um, a local publication, whether you like them, respect them or not, um, put this article on the front page of their publication, uh, which we knew was happening. And they have 20,000 followers on Facebook. So regardless of if you believe them or not, my name was personally out there and they said like, "She's an idiot. She filled out the permits the wrong way." And I would never normally fight this publication, but I was mad. And so I fought them and I have to say a big thank you to them because they're issuing a retraction after I pointed out where the facts were and they called and apologized. So great job, media. Uh, poor job, city council of Lake Geneva.
So anyway, that was our little rant. We always say, "We're here to be authentic." And if you knew us and we didn't talk about this this week-
It'd be weird.
It would be very weird.
Took over our life this week.
Um, we're drinking some Grimona. This is also weird. You all know, I'm on record as saying, "I hate cava."
Yeah, I think of you when I buy it.
Awfully often bad. Grimona is cava, but it's very fancy, very good cava.
It is very good.
This is their base cuvée. And so the thing with cava is there's a lot of just garbage out there because you can use these crappy grapes that you can over-farm and just throw it in, add a little bit of sugar. And you know what? It's fine. It's sparkling wine. And I hate that. I, I, I never liked the whole like, oh, let's just good enough. I hate the good enough thing. Good enough for government work. I hate that.
Here we are.
Um, but Grimona, this is a family. They've been doing this for a long time. They adhere to some higher quality standards, do some great jobs with the grape growing. And, um, you know, this is 20 bucks, so it's not cheap.
It's delicious.
But it's less expensive than champagne. And you know me, you know Bridgette, we should have sparkling wine every day. We're celebrating failure, celebrating success, celebrating getting one over on the local publication that had to apologize to Bridgette.
Made by day, okay. Whatever.
So it doesn't matter if it's, I don't know, your event got can't, your events-
Events.
Got canceled because the city council might have some personal things that held this up. It might be, you got engaged. It might be-
Whatever.
New kid. Congratulations, Aaron.
Um, who's Aaron? Our Aaron?
Our Aaron. She just had a kid.
Oh, I'm like, is she pregnant again? Okay, okay.
So, you know, like-
Aaron, that works for us.
No, 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 no. Aaron down the road, Palchuk.
Oh, that Aaron. Okay. I'm like, Aaron that works for us had a kid like six, seven months ago. Okay, yes. Congratulations to that Aaron. Aaron, Lucy was talking about Lincoln all morning.
So, uh, you know, whatever you need, have some sparkling wine. Celebrate the joys and failures of lives.
You know what?
Great adventure.
I, this morning, this morning felt like a morning that I had to take my ibuprofen with my coffee, which I did do. I wrote that down here because I, like, I've been waking up with just like, I know I'm old type of things, like, oh, my back hurts. But, okay, so in the morning, are you like a news watcher in the morning? What do you do?
We watch Mickey Mouse Clubhouse.
Oh, right. Okay. So that's fine. Um, I mean-
And then we turn to, um, we, we're a Today Show house. You're a Good Morning America.
Yeah. So, okay, that's, you watch the news, right?
Yep.
So I've been watching Good Morning America a little more, but like mostly I'm annoyed by it because one, it's the same five story. Like I went on a news break for a very long time. I was not watching news in the morning. We watched like, yeah, some Mickey Mouse Clubhouse, Finding Nemo, whatever, and no news. But now I, I put the news on for a little while and I'm like, ugh, I hate this. But my man, who I have loved before the rest of the world loved him, Prince Harry, had an interview. Did you hear about this?
I did not.
Okay. He did, um, James Gordon, Corden, Corden, did a thing with him. I didn't know they were like buddies. Maybe they're not.
I hear James Corden's kind of a douche.
Oh my God, don't tell me that because I, I never like, I don't pull stuff up on YouTube and watch 20 minutes of videos. I don't do any of that. This morning I did while I was like getting ready and it made, I was laughing out loud. So do yourself a favor. This is not my news story. This is just like what made my morning and look up Prince Harry and James Corden. They did the funniest, it's not really carpool karaoke, but it was on top of a double-decker bus.
That's kind of funny.
It is very good. Okay. Anyway, do yourself a favor.
Yeah. I was just, you know, I'm very bummed about these, uh, things not happening because they were cool and we like to do cool stuff, but my weekend's opened up, which is cool.
Yeah, it is nice.
Uh, this weekend we're supposed to do Korean. I know Chef Young was kind of bummed we weren't going to do it. Uh, he suggested maybe it's because people didn't want Korean food in Lake Geneva.
Bad idea.
Which-
It's delicious.
Korean food's the best. So maybe Saturday, I'm just going to cook a bunch of Korean food myself.
Oh, that sounds good.
And, uh, you know, maybe we just-
And wallow in our sorrow.
Drink some wine and, you know.
Go to a different city and host a pop-up restaurant.
We'll see. Anyway, uh, speaking of like delicious things, and speaking of Chef Young.
Yeah, okay.
Bridgette, you got something that speaks to-
So the best thing I ate this week? You've probably, if you've been following from the beginning, you know, Nick and I have talked about the specialty croissants at Simple. They have a peach one.
Excuse me, the what?
I'm sorry, croissants?
Croissants.
I have to say it like that for Nick. Croissant? Um, you should see my face when I do it. Um, they have a peach one in the summer that is like, I'm already looking forward to. But I went in the other day and they had a specialty croissant.
Croissant.
And it was like, um, they called it, it was the day we found out. No, it was the day I saw the article of me being shit on in the local publication. And so I was not thrilled and-
And so you chose to eat your feelings?
I 100% chose to eat my feelings and go to the bakery. And I did. I knew like, I made the choice. Like, I'm going to go eat my feelings. Um, and they had this specialty croissant that like, they called it the breakup croissant. And I was like, I need this. Um, and it was like, um, a coffee cake. So it had cream cheese in the middle and like a cinnamon crumble on top. It was to die for. So-
Shannon, why didn't you tell me about this?
I know. Maybe they have another one today. Maybe it's still there. I don't know. If it is in your local, go get one.
I, um, ate my feelings and cheese.
Oh, also good.
The best thing I ate today actually kind of goes along with this. And eating my feelings and cheese, um, it actually isn't the best thing I ate. Um, I made like a number of three and a half out of five meals this week where none of them were like particularly noteworthy.
Do you rank your own meals?
Oh, yeah. Like if you're not honest with yourself about how good your food was, then how are you ever going to get better?
Yeah, man. I don't know. My noodles and meatballs for my kid were definitely a five.
Um, but it was on Tuesday when all this stuff happened and I wanted to make tacos. I wanted to make steak tacos. We got Sarah's little brother, uh, Mitchell to come over to eat tacos, which was wonderful. We love having him here. He's great with Simona. Uh, he sucks up some of that, you know, little after dinnertime when she's a little crabby or want to keep her up for a little bit.
Yeah.
You know, Uncle Mitchy.
Uncle Mitchell.
Um, so, but, uh, Bridgette, you came over. Ron, you came over.
Oh, I was like, what?
And, uh, it was just all of the things I love about food. I love about drinks. It was like 43 degrees outside.
I know it felt like spring. That was the best.
So just had all of our seasonings out on the cart outside, some beers, light in the grill, just like nice hangout time with friends and commiserating over how crappy everything is.
And our weekly shout out to Ron and Josie, I think. They both called us right when they saw the news to check in on us, which was so sweet because they know how much goes into these events.
And we went from like prep mode for meal for 80 to 100 people to like, oh my God, we have to tell all these people, everything is canceled and not like appear to be total idiots in the process. So it was-
It was a political game.
Yeah, we had to, you know, tell the people that bought tickets. We had to tell our vendors. We had to tell the charities. Um-
That was the worst.
That was the worst. We actually did the math out and it would have been significantly over $10,000.
In economic impact.
That we would have had for the restaurants that we were working with and the charities we were working with and the landlord and the rental companies. And it was all in Lake Geneva. Um, so yeah, it's just-
We're not mad. We're not mad. Can you tell? We're not bitter.
Bitter. We're not salting anybody's well.
But we have some cool things coming out of it. So we-
Very cool. Stay tuned.
We are working on some fun projects to get creative and they just won't be necessarily within the city limits.
Cause you know what it's like. Someone dumps you, you go and find someone hotter and just bang them.
Um, yep. Mm-hmm. And eat a croissant.
That's what you do.
Well, guys, on that note, we're moving away from politics.
Their best friend. Just, doesn't matter. Just scorcher.
Williams Bay to Lake Geneva.
Lake Geneva, you don't want us?
We'll go to Williams Bay.
We're going to go to Williams Bay. She's hotter anyway.
She, oh, okay. I'm done. I was going to make, I was about to spit words out. That would have made me sound really terrible. So I'm moving on to a news story.
Williams Bay boat launch is faster and easier than Lake Geneva's. That's for certain.
Is it? That lot's always full. Yeah, but all you have to do is park across the street. You're right. Okay. You win, Williams Bay. Um, all right. So I saw an article, which is many of the things I love, which is public street art. So-
I love public street art.
Love a good like public art project. Another thing the city of Lake Geneva has a real challenge with, trust me, I've tried. Um, but-
Who's going to pay for it? It's free.
What if not everyone likes the art? Why? Okay, anyway.
We were asked a legitimate question. We were asked, well, we weren't asked because we weren't allowed to speak, but a question that was asked during the city council meeting was, what if somebody gets sick and dies at this dinner? Would the city get sued?
No, is the answer. We have extra insurance. It was part of getting our business license. But that's fine.
We're not there.
We're fine. We're moving on. So Milwaukee, my beloved city that allows me to do all kinds of fun and crazy things. Um, on March 1st, they're doing, there's a project called the Floral Heart Project, started in New York, of course, of all the great cities. Um, it's an art project that kind of turned into a COVID memorial. So, uh, it's coming to Milwaukee. So apparently Monday, March 1st is the National Day of Mourning. Uh, didn't know that, but we can all mourn on March 1st. Um, they, the Floral Heart Project is going to install a large heart-shaped wreath at the Museum Center Park at the Milwaukee Art Museum. So this project is these, um, you may have seen like the floral bombs in New York where there was a florist going around like putting flowers all out of the garbage cans and like taking these kind of ugly things and making them beautiful. That was like started my obsession with the love of these like floral projects, but this is a little bit different, but I just think it's cool that Milwaukee's part of a project. You know, I love when Milwaukee's included on first tier city things. So like, it's not just Chicago and New York doing it, but Milwaukee's in on the game. So, um, anyway, it is one of 85 such installations. So I shouldn't, there's 85 of them. So I'm hoping Milwaukee's included, but really cool. Just a fun little thing. Um, so I'm glad it's happening in Milwaukee. Uh, we can all, you know, look at it, think of the, the weird year we've had and, uh, check it out if you get a chance, drive up to Milwaukee.
This thing-
That was a weird pause.
I saw this and I said, I have to talk about this on the podcast.
And I said, "What the hell is this?" When I saw the title of the article.
I was on Reddit.
Of course.
And I saw the thing of today, I learned there's such a thing as wet water. And I said, "What the heck is wet water?"
That's what I saw, wet water.
And I'm like, if I'm saying what the heck is wet water, Bridgette is going to, her mind is just going to go.
Which is exactly what I did before we started recording. I'm like, what the hell is your news article about?
Don't read, don't read it. Don't read it. So, um, wet water, we're on the National Wildfire Coordinating Group's website. This isn't where I originally saw about it. There's a lot of articles out there. You can read about it. I just want to have a discussion of like-
I just went on the National Wildfire.
How much can we screw with Bridgette on air right now?
Come on. About wet water?
Wet water. You can't even-
I know. I don't want to be part of this.
Wet water is water with added chemicals called wetting agents that increases water spreading and penetrating properties due to a reduction in surface tension. So evidently firefighters like modify water.
No.
Yes.
No.
They change water to make it wetter.
Okay. Is there such a thing as dry water?
I don't know. I mean, maybe there's a way you can increase the surface tension to make it dry water. So it doesn't-
This is absurd. Who is wasting their time doing this?
Firefighters. Are you saying firefighters or?
I'm not. I'm sorry. I don't understand the science of wet water.
So anyway, um-
Okay, this is weird, but my sister has a friend that's a, like fights the, like out west.
He's like a smoke jumper?
Wildfires. I don't know. I just know he's-
He probably uses wet water.
Like he's gone for a long time fighting massive wildfires. And I would be, I want to know. Brittany, yet again, can you do some research for us?
Tell us more about wet water. Is it bad for the environment?
I, yeah, is it? Is it worse to have wetter water? That's a ridiculous article. Why? This is why Reddit is the most useless place on the internet.
I don't really have anything else. I don't have a dad joke. I have nothing. I just have wet water.
Well, yeah.
I saw the phrase wet water and that you could make water wetter. And I said-
Bridgette needs to know about this.
Bridgette's going to lose her mind over this.
All of our listeners need to know too. This is really important stuff.
Wet water.
Groundbreaking news from Nick Forbaggel.
If you have a fire.
Wet your water up a little.
Wet your water up a little bit.
Take the time to wet it up a little and then put it out.
I don't know. I mean, increases water spreading and penetrating.
Feels like that would take a lot of time, right?
I think the firefighters just have like a thing.
They like have extra tubs of wetter water than the rest of us. Chief Peters, I'm going to talk to our local fire chief. I, I like him. He's a kind person. He cares about our community a lot. I think we should ask him.
He signed off on our permits.
Thank you.
On that note, we're going to break.
We're back.
Back.
We were just joking about wet water. I hope you were talking about it too.
Wet ass water.
Oh, don't do it. Don't do it. So I remember growing up and, um, my mom was always, I would always like be like, "Mom, why don't you buy something for yourself, mom?" And I never understood like why parents don't buy things for themselves. Cause I always loved shopping. I am there. I'm here talking about product recommendations and I feel like every week I'm sharing with you things for my kids. But here I am. I'm a mom and I like to shop at Goodwill, so I can't really product wreck Goodwill to you. So-
I think you've done it before.
I mean, maybe I have, so I won't do it again. What I'm here to tell you about is Elliot's birthday is coming up and since he is four.
If anybody wants to send him anything, let me know. I can get you the address.
Oh, yeah. Oh my God. Or write him a card. He will love it. Um, he's four, so he doesn't listen to the podcast. So we are looking at, you know, like all good parents want to attempt to, um, do, say, "We're going to do all Montessori activities at our home." Well, I still cling to that idea. So yeah, we're buying him like the Pokemon crap that he wants, but I'm also getting him these, they're called stacking rocks. I'm sure you saw them maybe around holidays. Yes. But so what's great about this is I have two kids and as Elliot starts to, like Elliot loves to build. He loves to do, you know, right now we're really big into-
He's great on Minecraft?
Yes, but we're real big into magnetiles again. Like both kids love them. And they're so expensive, magnetiles.
Super expensive.
So we are looking at like alternatives to those, but in the meantime, I'm doing these stacking rocks, which you can find all over Etsy or on Amazon. So whichever way.
Let me read you the highlights.
Okay.
Novel stacking toy. Skill developing. Perfect family game material. Ideal gift option.
See, look at that. Just because they told me it was an ideal gift, I said, "It is an ideal gift for my Elliot." So anyway, you can, like I said, Amazon or Etsy, we will link to both. So you can pick whichever way you choose to shop. Uh, they're really come in a million different colors. You can get, uh, you know, five of them up to like a million. I have no idea. We're getting the like 30 pack or so. Really fun activity. And actually I can tell that I'm going to be obsessed with them as well.
Yeah, you are going to be. And you're going to get really mad at him when he doesn't do it right.
I, I am practicing that. I practice it all the time. So many times a day. I'm going at it. I bite my tongue.
My turn?
Your turn.
Okay.
Which Nick has not filled anything in, which means this is going to be something good again.
So, uh, this is a live, on-air unboxing.
Oh, boy.
I had to postpone the podcast by about three minutes because I forgot this at work.
Oh, boy. Yeah, to go back. I said, "Just pick a different one."
This is in an Amazon bag. Ooh, I didn't share that right.
This was sitting in his office. I was wondering what's so important. Oh, God.
Sonic the Hedgehog coloring book. When your kid loves Sonic the Hedgehog.
Oh, boy.
Need a Sonic the Hedgehog coloring book.
Let's, to be clear, guess who does not like it? Simona. This is for Elliot.
Elliot spent about seven minutes telling me all of how much he loves Sonic the Hedgehog. And they're like 72 different ways he likes Sonic the Hedgehog.
Yeah, he's-
But he did not have a Sonic the Hedgehog coloring book. So-
Oh, good job, Nick.
Now he does. There was a sticker book I considered getting and would have been here faster, which would have, you know, like kids can change. Kids can change. Well, this isn't for his birthday. We have something better for that.
Well, this is just for-
Um, the stickers may have ended up in places you didn't want them to.
Like currently on my big picture windows?
Correct.
Yeah, there are stickers there.
So I like you enough that I didn't get the sticker box. I decided the coloring book would be better.
You said a really good thing here. His, he just started liking Sonic. And so I'm like, will this last till his birthday next week or are we going to have to change? I know this is how I feel about Pokemon. I'm like, is it Minecraft? Is it Pokemon? I have no idea.
Well, what was it? It was Farm Animals last year.
I know, man. Who the heck knows? I don't even know what was his birthday party.
Last year, last year was the start of COVID.
Oh, yeah. We were at a bowling alley. It was great. It was, excuse me, we were at a bowling alley before COVID. It was like COVID was the week after, everybody.
To be fair, COVID was a thing and we were all questioning, was this appropriate? And it was like, eh, this is a China virus. China.
Lucy had hand, foot and mouth.
That's right. She did. We were more concerned about was Lucy.
We were a mess. Guys, we're going to take a break.
Was Lucy patient zero or not?
It was Lucy. Okay, we're taking a break.
Be right back.
Okay, we're back.
Did you miss us?
Did you hear us say whoop off air? Cause I did that. The Wisconsin whoop or the Midwest? I don't know. We were just talking Sonic on our break. It was, you know, entertaining.
I was never into Sonic. I didn't know Sonic still existed.
Yeah, I didn't either.
But Elliot's into it. So-
Cause I, I didn't really play Sonic either, nor did I know it existed, but Tyler did. So here we are. Good thing I have Tyler, man.
All right. So it is time for Interesting Questions with Bridgette and Nick.
Ooh, I like that ambition.
I haven't done a ton of research. I have a list of some ideas. So we're just going to like quick fire. Hamburgers or hot dogs?
Hamburgers for sure.
100 years in the past or 100 years in the future?
Whoa.
The future is aft, let me tell you.
100 years in the past.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, purple nose or green ears?
Whoa, green ears.
Picnic in the park or on the beach?
Park. I don't want sand in my food. It always gets in your food.
Eat a beetle or be stung by a bee?
Stung by a bee. Gross.
God, that's bad. Five brothers or five sisters?
Five sisters. I already have sisters and I have brothers. Stepbrothers, brothers-in-law, not stepbrothers. Sorry, everybody. I'm tired. Nick snorted. We're doing great. We're a mess, as usual.
Eat a raw potato or a whole lime?
Whoa. Raw. Ooh, that's hard. What would you pick?
Whole lime. I can deal with acid like fine, but like the idea of a whole potato raw.
I mean, I'm going to say it's a whole red potato and it's small, so I'll do that. Maybe I can rice it. Raw.
Be trapped in a room with a friendly tiger or with 10 bumblebees?
Oh, friendly tiger. It could be my Rajah. Shannon wanted to name her dog Rajah and I fully supported it, but Rajah was, I mean, their dog's a girl. So they decided Rajah's a boy, I guess. I don't know.
I thought Rajah was a girl.
So did I. Maybe Michael just vetoed it. I don't know.
Michael vetoed it?
I don't know. I thought it was the best name for a dog.
I agree. Live where it's always dark outside or always light outside?
Oh, shit. Actually think always dark.
I agree.
That's a weird thing to say, but I have kids and I want them to sleep.
Go for a drive in a convertible or a double-decker bus and you're sitting on top.
I've done both. Uh, so I guess normally I would say convertible. I don't really know. That one, I don't know. Have you been on a double-decker bus?
No, because I don't do tourist things usually.
Why? When in Rome, man?
I don't know. I like to live like the Romans.
I mean, I lived in London for a while, so I felt like at some point I needed to do it at least once. But also actually I did it in Ireland for the first time. It was sleeting. It was hilarious and fun. It was great.
I've done it in Chicago on the architectural tour thing.
Oh, I did the boat architecture tour.
I did both of them.
Yeah, it was foggy. So we actually didn't see it.
It's actually, I'd highly recommend that. I should, like, it's a really good tour. The boat one, the bus one's not good.
Oh, it's not?
No.
It's too hard, the bus ones. You're like trying to see, I don't know. Um, everyone has recommended that. Yeah, everyone said it's their favorite one.
Last one, this one cuts close for you.
Oh.
Have a cool new shirt in your closet every morning, but from Goodwill. So like, you know-
So it wasn't pricey.
Sustainable, like doesn't cost you anything.
Okay.
And like you have that little bit of like OG street cred with it.
That's right.
Or new pair of designer limited edition shoes every week. That's like, oh my God, you are the shoe god.
Um.
Cause your shoe game's strong. I meant to say, I recommend whatever like short boots with the little zip-up thing you got on today.
Oh, thanks, man.
They're pretty strong.
I, that's tough. Uh, but I think I would rather have a different shirt.
I mean, you do good with the shirt.
I don't know. That's because like I like the variety. I'm a not, I just had this discussion with a friend.
Overall, you're a little bit better on the, on the shoes than your shirts.
Yeah, here's the thing.
They're both very good.
I actually appreciate that because I like shoes more. I just got two new pairs. They were from Goodwill and they are shoes that I have been looking for. And before you get after me about used shoes from Goodwill, I have a cleaning regimen that is like very great and wonderful. And they are almost new sparies that were half off and I needed a new pair. And New Balance gym shoes, which make me sound 90, but they're awesome and like kind of purple and blue. I was literally looking online for both of those pairs. Okay. I just got really fired up.
See, this is why it cuts a little close to the bone for you.
Because I don't want, like, I don't need designer shoes. I don't need a pair of Louboutins. I don't care.
They don't have to be Louboutins. They can be stretchers.
New Balance from Goodwill? No, because the fun is finding that.
Oh, so you still want the fun of the hunt of the shoe?
It's the thrill of the hunt. Let's be clear.
This is why-
It was like boyfriends in high school. That's really horrible, but kind of true. I'm way past high school, so we can say that.
Tyler, watch out.
Tyler and I didn't date till after college. We almost dated in high school. Anyway.
It was the mullet, wasn't it?
It was the bleached lightning bolts that really got me. Oh, you guys will have to reach out to my husband for that story. Maybe I'll put him in kid corner one week. Oh, good times.
So you're going with the shirt?
Yeah, man. I don't know. No, I gotta change it. I clearly care about shoes more. I gotta tell you, so this is dumb, but any women listening, particularly if you were like of my age and live in a small town. I came from a city where like often I wore business suits and then I at least wore business casual. And then I worked at a place that I could wear whatever I wanted and then I moved here. So my wardrobe changed drastically, but like, I still love wearing heels and I love getting dressed up. But man, you put on a pair of heels in Lake Geneva and people think like you're going to the prom. So I was like, okay, I need that like perfect kind of mid-heel that's like a little blockier and whatever. Still fashionable. So as I was coming into 2020, so like winter 2019, I had acquired a very good collection of like the perfect heel for spring. And I was so excited. And then fucking Corona fuckers happened and I just wore like leggings and gym shoes every day. And I'm like, I don't have a good, I don't like have a lot of leggings and gym shoes because I like to get dressed up. So my wardrobe game, I, I don't even know what to do. Like-
I wear jeans every day and, uh, Alexium and Country meets polo.
I know, man. We live on different sides of the planet.
Um, I would prefer to wear a selection of Nike low tops every day.
Yeah.
But I have-
Do you have a certain kind, like Tyler likes Nike Air Max?
I like Nike Air Max, yeah.
Okay, but like, do you like other Nikes?
Um, I like the Flyknits.
I don't know what that is.
My problem is I have really bad, uh, flat feet.
Hmm.
And I'm technically supposed to be wearing these like heel supports or arch supports. They, and I suppose I've been doing this since like seventh grade. They don't fit into, I don't, so I have, also have like really bad ankles that like roll.
Yeah.
So it's like, I've never rolled an ankle because they just like, have nothing to them, so like.
They just roll.
So I've always liked low tops, so I'm like, actually I can use this as like a form of flexibility.
Instead of high tops for support?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, yeah.
So, um, like I've just gone with that. It's a thing that my body has. We're all beautiful and unique. That's like my beautiful and unique thing. So I always like low tops, um, especially like when you're playing tennis, cause like you can like, get in anyway and pitching, it works really well.
I don't play tennis or pitch.
I like low tops. And let me tell you, when you add two inches to a low top, it is not a comfortable shoe at all.
Oh, cause you're just popping out.
Yep.
Oh.
So now I wear, uh, the nice shoes, uh, Tivas that Sean Payne at Clearwater Outdoor told me to buy for my bad feet.
I didn't realize Tivas made anything except like the Velcro sandals that I had when I was a kid.
Oh, they have some great shoes.
Yeah, until I went in Clearwater and was like, oh.
So I had to, cause like my back will throb, like if I go back into my neckies.
Have a podiatrist?
I used to when I was a kid and now I'm a man and I don't go to the doctor.
Oh yeah, that's so manly. I have never been to, well, I probably did when I broke my foot. But I don't, I have fear that if I went to a podiatrist, they would tell me many things that I need to change.
I had to go to a podiatrist because I had ingrown toenails.
Oh my god.
And they had to fix it and they fixed it. Uh, they put like acid on there to like kill the growth, anyway. So like, they also like, oh, by the way, you might want some insoles. And I got them, I'm like, this is annoying. And I had to wear like, I was in like seventh grade, so of course you buy the like,
Yeah.
Really terrible all-white like Walmart brand high tops, cause you gotta wear them all the time, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So it's not like you can go buy Jordans, cause you're growing.
Kind of if you go to Goodwill. I just found Jordans at Goodwill, actually. It didn't fit Elliot.
So anyway, that's, you know, that's.
Okay, well, Nick has feet problem. We went there.
It's okay. I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not ashamed.
I don't know what to say anymore about this. We're just gonna go right from ingrown toenails to food.
Hey, it's okay to have them. Go talk to your doctor, they'll fix it. Don't do that home stuff. Like, you're not gonna do it right. They have these things.
I didn't know. I just thought you like clipped your toenails.
Oh no, like if they ingrow, they ingrow. It's very painful, so they like, they have to like numb it, pull the stuff back, cut it out, extract it. And then they have like an acid that they like put on it and makes the thing stop.
Okay.
It worked when they did it.
I mean, I'm, okay.
Medicine works. Thanks, science.
This is like.
I'm also immune to coronavirus now.
I, oh man.
Science.
We, me and the hubs, we're open for vaccines on March first. So hopefully we get an appointment. We'll see. Okay, everybody.
I knew you were gonna pick this. As soon as I saw the meal plan, I'm like, oh, this is.
I wasn't gonna pick it, so, well, predictable, but I did, anyway, because.
It's delicious. Don't apologize.
You can hate on me if you want. Alright guys, next week's meal plan, we've got a lot of fish on the meal plan because we, it's Lent. Um, so if that is something you are celebrating in your house, um, or.
Remember, Jesus hates you if you eat fish on Fridays.
Uh, this is a funny, like, I grew up Catholic.
If you don't eat fish on Friday.
If you eat meat. He's doing great. Um.
I am Catholic. I observe Lent.
Our friend Erin Murphy grew up Lutheran and she always asked us like, why don't you eat meat? Like she observed Lent, but was like, why don't you eat meat on Friday? And we're like, I don't know, we're not supposed to, like, but this is all we, you know.
I mean, it's because Peter was a fisherman and we wanted to make the fishermen rich.
So Nick actually knows. Our answer was like, I don't know, I'm not supposed to. And she's like, that's ridiculous. Why? And you know, so that always stuck in my head. Uh, we're a big family that likes to do something extra during Lent instead of give something up. Uh, which I know like isn't what you're supposed to do, but that's the way we do it.
I always do the like make yourself better thing too.
Yeah, we, we used to when we were kids. I think my mom taught it to us as like donate to a charity or do some volunteer work, uh, which was cool. So anyway, we liked that. We're bringing that to our kids. So anyway, I'm eating meat, cause the day that this meal plan item is on is not on Friday.
We're having cheese pizza tonight. Imagine me and Sarah and I that are not fish people and Catholic?
Yeah, you guys, and you're devout to this. I, I eat meat on Fridays now, sorry. Cause really, we go to a Lutheran church.
It's okay.
Um, anyway, what I'm talking about is a pork chop and waffle sandwich, okay?
It's delicious.
As gluttonous as you can be.
Good.
I think we have, do we have chicken waffles on the website too?
Yeah, we have chicken and waffles on there too.
Cause that's clearly my winning choice, but that's not on the meal plan this week. So.
I actually like the pork chop and waffle more.
Do you? Why?
A little bit more fat in it.
Oh yeah, okay. See, and I don't like, yeah, I want like the spicy chicken with the sweet waffle. So the straight up like Nashville.
Oh, I want the like Belgian waffle where the Belgian waffle is like fluffy and, yeah.
Now I just want waffles. So anyway, this is a recipe from our.
Maybe we could do a chicken and waffle pop-up in Lake Geneva.
Probably not. But I bet. Okay, the best part of this sandwich, I would think, the maple gravy.
Oh, for shizzle.
Anyway, I actually haven't made this one yet. So I have made chicken and waffles and love it obviously, but I'm gonna take Nick's recommendation of the fatty pork. And maple gravy.
But it's just.
Yeah, better. So anyway, we, that's what I'm eating this week. I don't know, pork chop and waffle sandwich sounds good to me. What about you?
Uh, one of the most ridiculous, how much do we talk about tacos?
I know. I, I actually put these on and I was like, Nick's gonna pick a taco.
This week's Taco Tuesday meals are.
They're both slow cooker ones. That's the, that's the key.
They're strong.
Yeah.
Um, I make a lot of good tacos. I was texting a friend of mine recently. I said, if there's two things I do right, it's make tacos and drink beer.
Many skills.
These tacos were some of the better tacos I've ever made. They are a short rib barbacoa taco. So barbacoa, uh, comes from barbecue. Uh, anyway, traditionally in the Yucatan, you dig a big pit and, you know, you cook them. Uh, we need to be very clear that the Mexicans own tacos. Us Americans do not own tacos. We're just taking from their cultural heritage. Uh, so the barbacoas, you dig the pit and you cook the things in there underground, usually wrapped in banana leaves a long time. However, most of us don't have pits, banana leaves or a long time.
I was like, are you building a pit?
So, I do have, I, before we built your house, I had a pit. Actually, it's, uh, where Bridget's parked right now was a barbacoa pit. Uh, and I cooked a lot of tacos in there because it's a great way of cooking. However, it takes a long time. There are some very serious ways you can screw up and kill yourself. I don't wanna say kill yourself, but get pretty sick.
Oh.
Um, so anyway, these tacos, you do them in the slow cooker with short ribs. So it's deliciously fatty, deliciously flavorful. And the key is, uh, you cook them in there and then you shred them and then you fry them to get all the extra fat off.
Ooh.
So you, so you shred them, cause the short ribs have a lot of fat, right? So you shred the meat and there's gonna be bits of fat on there. Throw them in a frying pan with some other stuff. The fat melts off and you get crispy deliciousness all over.
Delicious.
Oh, these were.
This I can get on board with, actually.
They were so good, so good.
I'm glad you explained it, because.
Make sure you cook them, uh, an authentic style. Don't do gringo style. These are not good with cheese and lettuce and crap. These are good with.
Cilantro and onion only?
And lime, you know, actually avocado is good with it too.
I'm gonna not do the onion, but I know that won't be as good. But otherwise, that sounds awesome.
Uh, so yeah, that, that would be my suggestion on this. Um, but man, these were good.
We've got some good ones up this week. And if you're a fan of seafood, I think there's three days of seafood, so, um, I don't know. I think it's a good one. We always think it's a good one, though.
It's cause you don't suck.
Okay, thanks.
Personally, I think I ever get a retraction on a local, uh, paper.
I know, I'm so excited about it, you guys.
No, I think Bak Choy did too.
I'm sorry, we don't have the retraction yet, so maybe we're celebrating too soon.
Hey, you got no one to hold them, no one to fold them, no one to walk away.
I did get it.
No one to run. You never count your chickens before they hatch.
Well, guys, do you know what it's time for? Kid corner. Since we've done such a good job of grossing you out and then talking about food and then grossing you out and talking about food, we're gonna gross you out again. Um.
I wanna know what this is about.
Oh, Nick. I think you know.
I know what the first one is, but the second one, I don't know what this is about.
Okay, so the first one, the second one will be short and it's mostly because I feel bad that I have two kids and we've been talking about Lucy's disgustingness a lot.
It's okay.
But this one was timely. So, um, I now fully understand why parents never go out of town or treat themselves or try and relax or do anything like that. Um, we did that. Uh, we were like, you know what? I thought that, uh, I had worked the previous two weekends and I thought I was gonna be working these upcoming three weekends for dinners. Uh, little did I know, but so I was like, you know what? I have one weekend off, like let's go take a moment. Tyler and I haven't been away.
This is a vast Tyler conspiracy.
Maybe, let's dig into it. Next week's podcast. Um.
Tyler's sweet and innocent. He has nothing to do with this.
So we're like, let's just go for a minute. We have like a whole bunch of things that we don't even take time to talk about, cause we have two children and life is crazy. So anyway, um, we went to a bed and breakfast in a small town, like we were very comfortable with their COVID precautions. It was a podunk effing town and so there was nothing going on, but this bed and breakfast was amazing. So my, um, my in-laws were unavailable to help with the kids. My mom was gone. It was just my dad. And I'm like, oh, it's a lot for someone to take both kids overnight. Like, I, I trust every one of my parent units to take care of the kids, but I just feel, we felt really bad, right? Going into it. So, um.
Good work, Sean.
My dad was like, we got it. It's cool. He's so good with the kids. We're like, alright, you're right. This is good. So we left the kids, we get back, like, you know, my dad texts us pictures throughout the day, like, look at what they're doing. This is so fun, great. And we're like, awesome, yay. All these great things. Fast forward, we get back on Sunday right around, um, Lucy's nap time and they're just like hanging out at my dad's, um, at my parents' house. I'm like, oh, okay, dad, how did, you know, how'd it go? Whatever. Good, good, good. We did these things. I'm like, okay, well, how did they sleep? Just like hoping he'd be like, great. So how'd they sleep? And he goes, good. With that silent pause. So like with the silence and he was like, yeah, good. I'm like, okay, what? And then it just started pouring out. Well, little Lucy got sick. So like Lucy has not barfed her brains out yet because she's one and a half. So like she's thrown up, but like it's just been, you know, like, wow, just puked my applesauce on top of me, whatever. This sounded like it was full-on barfing. So my dad put her down. Lucy is a like, put you down, she doesn't even cry. She like pulls up her blanket and tells you to leave. And she sleeps for eleven hours, you know, it's great. My dad was like, yeah, she fussed a little. And my dad was so great telling the story because he did not want us to feel bad. So he was like, not wanting to tell all the details, but then like me, I'm like, what happened? What'd she eat? What color was her puke? You know, I like need to know everything. So yeah, so, um, I won't give you everything because like, you know, we're on a time limit here, but basically he put her down and said she cried for a while, which was weird. So I went up there and I like rubbed her back and I rubbed her stomach. And as soon as I was rubbing her stomach, she felt better, calmed down. I left the room. And then, um, Shannon stopped by, cause Shannon knew my dad was there with both kids. So she brought Nolan over, her, her baby, her youngest. And, and my dad was like, she came over like an angel, because she happened to show up right as my dad went upstairs to a crib full of Lucy's puke. So like.
The same pack and play?
It's the same one!
I mean, maybe she ate her own poop.
We are burning it. I said, I know, you guys, if, if you didn't listen, you need to go, was that last week or two weeks ago?
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago to the Lucy eating her own poop story, it's the same pack and play. I am telling you, I'm burning it. I will buy my parents a new one or give them my old, I don't care, but no one's sleeping in that pack and play.
Give them your old one, buy yourself a new one.
Yeah, whatever, man. She's almost out of the crib. I don't care. They can have my old crib, I don't care, but no one is sleeping in that pack and play. So she puked all over herself in her bed. They got her out, got her changed, gave her a bath, cause like she's got long hair now and there was chunks in it. So then my dad brought her down, so I'm sorry, then I don't know exactly the time of events, cause I wasn't there. And, you know, he brought her downstairs at some point and was just like, you know, doing this on the shoulder, rocking her. And Shannon's like, Lucy's throwing up. Like no one could hear her. Shannon just saw her start barfing for a second time all over my dad in the kitchen. And so like he brought her to the kitchen sink and here's how he described it. I was catching her puke and dumping it in the sink. I'm like, oh my god. Did she have eggs for breakfast? I'm like, yes. So there you go, everybody. This went on and on and there were many more details, but Lucy threw up all over herself twice. I feel terrible. My dad just felt really bad for her and Shannon, he just kept saying what a godsend Shannon was. Because, man, this is real parent guilt. And you come home and you're like, okay, my sister and my dad not only helped with my kids, but they cleaned up her barf twice in the middle of the night. And Shannon has a six, seven-month-old baby. So like, okay, I'm never leaving town again.
What about Elliot?
Okay, Elliot, we, um, Elliot really likes to go to the grocery store with me, so we just like went for fun the other day when I picked him up. Got a couple of things we needed, but then he's, mom, can we go to the pet store? Which like is always a terrible idea, but it was across the street. And we're like, yeah, okay, whatever. So we went into Petco. Long story short, uh, I had hamsters when I was a kid and loved them with all of my soul. And now Elliot wants a hamster. And this is a feud in our house, cause I was kinda like, okay, we could get him a hamster for his birthday.
Dog.
And Tyler was like, no, are you kidding me? You cannot. And I was like, yeah, I mean, like, come on, sure. And he's like, we are not getting a hamster. Anyway, he was like literally sitting on the floor like by the hamster cage, like building, you know, hamsters have all those like weird plastic parts. He was like building his own cage.
Minecraft.
Oh, yeah. Anyway, it was just, I had to mention my little Elliot and I'm sorry to say, Tyler definitively said we're not getting a hamster, which I have to respect, cause I definitively said we're not getting a dog.
Maybe you could get a snake.
So also definitely, honestly, I was like, yeah, to the hamster, because it meant we don't have to get a snake. You know, cause when we go to the pet store, all Elliot wants to do is look at the snakes. Anyway, tell me about Simona.
Uh, so, this is not my story. This is from Sarah. Uh, but you know, parenting's a team game. Uh, also, I feel like we need to defend Lucy a little bit. So this is gonna be.
She barfing all over?
The nice side of Lucy.
Yeah, you're right.
Angelic side of Lucy.
Angelic.
So Simona has graduated classrooms, uh, in daycare and she's back with Lucy generally again.
Yeah.
Um, cause what, Lucy's three months older than Simona? Four months?
Um, Lucy's June first.
June to October, yeah. So, uh, four months, more or less.
Yeah, sure.
And, uh, so you know.
No, six months, seven months.
Is it that much?
Lucy was born in June.
Six to ten.
Six, whatever. No, you're right.
Yeah, so four months.
Four months. I was going the other way, yeah.
Um, so anyway, Simona's doing a really good job. I noticed she's speaking a lot more. It's crazy how fast I started talking with, uh, you know, being all around these kids.
Yeah, once they graded in the other classroom, isn't it nuts?
It's crazy. So Sarah goes to pick up Simona and Mr. Tyler was taking Simona out this one day. Uh, cause I think he was headed home and so he had Lucy with him. And Sarah goes to pick her up and they're all in the vestibule and Lucy and Simona are playing together. And Sarah goes to pick up Simona and take her away and Lucy goes, bye Mona.
I love that. I love Mona.
So cute and whatever, but this is my real point. Her name is Simona or Simo, not Mona.
No, I love it.
All of these kids call her Mona, which I get, cause she, she, she Mona, like that's a hard, that's a hard thing for kids, like they're gonna screw it up.
You like Mona?
It's not her name. Uh, although she has a cousin that calls her Sim, Simoana.
Ooh, that's good too.
Also good. I thought, so this is my point of like, when you name your kid, you think of like, what are the dumb names that everyone's gonna come up with?
Forever.
We thought my one grandpa was gonna go, ma, 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 Simona.
Oh yeah, that's annoying.
We thought that one, cause he does crap like that. He's a very nice man, but we're like. I told him some of this crap.
Every time they see each other.
Um, we did not think Mona.
I mean, I get why you wouldn't like Mona, but I actually think it's like a, like modern trendy. I don't know, I like Mona.
Her name is Simona.
Okay, to be clear, everybody. I did this too with my kids' names. I was like, I'm, uh, what I thought was, how will they get bullied? And so I thought through everything and then Brittany, I think it was Brittany, was like, what about smelly Ellie? They're gonna call him Smelly at Elliot. I'm like, oh my god, crap. Like, yeah, and I don't, haven't thought of Lucy's yet, but there's gonna be some. Cause kids are mean.
We're fine with, with Mona. It was very cute of Lucy.
Oh, I love this. Okay.
We said stand up for Lucy a little bit. I mean, she pukes all over, eats her own poop, but she's a lover.
She is smart. She let me put her hair up today. I thought that was gonna stay. It didn't. She ripped it right out, except it was so sticky from like applesauce that it just kinda stayed. I hope not. Maybe she puked last night. I missed it. Anyway, kids are great.
Kids are great. They're the best.
We've got Sonic.
Got puke. We got annoying nicknames that we did not intend for our daughter.
Man, you guys, thanks for hanging with us, especially if you don't have kids, cause that's the real treat.
I think we're validating your life decisions. Vasectomy at eighteen was a great move, man.
I think of my cousin Megan a lot, uh, who's had to postpone her wedding for like eight hundred years because of coronavirus. And I think of her a lot when we talk about kids. Hey, Megan, one day you'll, you'll get it.
You'll be great. It's gonna be great. It's great.
Okay, guys, make sure to watch us on YouTube. Find us on Instagram and Facebook at Dinner Plus Drinks Podcast.
Exciting news, we crossed a hundred subs on YouTube, so soon we're gonna get our own custom name on YouTube, so we don't say youtube slash capital J underscore U underscore sevens. So like, hopefully we'll have a good name on that soon. Uh, new website is beautiful. So dinnerplustrinks.com. We have all the stuff listed off there. You should check it out if you haven't.
Good product recs, great kid corners. I don't know. So thanks so much. Make sure to send us a note if you have any funny things to say. If you wanna wish Elliot a happy birthday, hello at dinnerplustrinks.com.
We appreciate you, unlike the Lake Geneva City Council. We hope you have a great week and we'll see you soon.
Bye.